The City of Manassia is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office (920-967-3608), contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website. Or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
Good evening, and I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting to order at 6:00 p.m. If you'd please join me in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Snyder, if we could have the roll, please?
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Eisenach.
Here.
Alderman Sevenik.
Here.
Alderman Perkins.
Here.
Alderman Lewis.
Here.
Alderman Marshall.
Here.
Alderman Grady. All are present.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to report to department officers, department head staffs, and consultants. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenik.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for us to receive minutes A through H and Communications I, J, and K.
Motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Grady. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. And then, there would be one communication left. Is there a motion?
Alderman Sevenik? Thank you.
Is there a second?
No, it's not.
Motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we'll move on to F, which is public comment on any matter or concern to the city. Please step forward, state your name, address, and you will have five minutes to speak.
I'd like to talk about the resolution on the recycling fee. Would you rather I waited to do it at the Board of Public Works' meeting instead, or is now fine?
You can do it here.
I got something for you. Anyways, Tim Jacobson, 955 Plank Road. Just a few comments on the memorandum recommending the $75 fee for recycling collection. You have to pardon my chin scratching, I had a 16-month helping me. I'm not here tonight to dispute the efforts to add collections of our recyclables. In my time, we offered to add collections a couple times, and it was voted down. But I do have some items that I dispute and/or need some clarification on, if you don't mind. First of all, the drop-off site was not implemented to cover overflow materials due to our collection scheduling. Our drop-off site was the first of any kind of recycling in the valley. That's why we were grandfathering in after Winnebago County built their MRF, the Material Recovery Facility. We were actually selling our paper products to gulpers and providing scholarships for high school kids to attend UW-Fox Valley. And UW-Fox Valley matched those funds dollar-for-dollar. The problem with the drop-off site is that Public Works has never allowed politically to operate it properly. Probably a third of the material out there isn't from city residents. Even if you close it, the material's gonna continue to come out there, only it will be dropped off at the gate, no matter how far out that gate is. Next, I don't dispute the expense chart provided in the memorandum. I'm sure staff has provided accurate information. What I don't see is any corresponding revenue generated to offset these expenses. The short list entails grant funding, sale of recyclables, off-road fuel tax rebate, and our highway aid revenue, just to list a few. There's also revenue that should be applied, that's generated through our refuse collection volume control system. In my time, we generated 17%, 19%, and even 20% of our expenses back to the city in revenue, just on refuse collection system. The whole idea, this is, if you can find Senator Black, who wrote the statute, the whole idea was to build incentives to recycle. Perhaps the revenue stream can be raised there also to be generated. The revenue that's generated in a refuse system is the volume control, dumpster rental, along with our highway aid and fuel tax rebate. I'm guessing the revenue is not shown because it gets put back into the general fund, or as I like to call it, the mayor's cookie jar. Herein lies my issue. The Department of Public Works is providing thousands of dollars in revenue that other operations benefit from, while the DPW gets what can only be described as what the pigeon left on the pump handle. All departments at one time or another has had to adjust operations according to changing times. Perhaps it is time for City Hall to adjust as well. Instead of distributing these revenues, looking to keeping them in a revolving account or an enterprise account to offset rising costs in all our waste stream activities. The next thing in the memorandum, a sentence describing the $75 charge for each cart owner is confusing, because the city owns the carts. Also, one building owner may have up to five carts. Should this be changed to dwellings instead of owner? Because an owner of a multifamily dwelling or a building could pay just one $75 charge and have up to five carts there, five apartments. We went through this when we delivered the carts and going off the tax rule, and that was on Green Bar back then, but when we delivered to R1s, we had multiple people come out and say, "Well, what about us?"
Your time is up, and we'll answer questions during the Board of Public Works' meeting, so thank you.
Okay. It's gonna take time, because this is a big project, but there's things that have to be cleared up. And I guess, in my conclusion, this memorandum does not give me any incentive to recycle, but it could give me a reason to move. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak this evening?
My name is Dwayne Chikuski. I am the Democratic candidate for the State Assembly here in the 53rd. I stand. I won't be calling you guys anymore for money. I tried that, that didn't work, so I just, I wanted to do a little meet and greet here and let you know who I am, why I'm here.
Let's try it again, then.
Hello. All right, I can speak up. Fine. So, for me, it's getting used to and understanding local government, as well as state government. So, cool as to the City of Manassia, you guys have done some wonderful things. I've got work before the mayor, for coffee, a couple mornings ago. He left me in, and I'm not willing to believe you guys have got some life problems. The great estate care here in Manassia, that's the first of the word in a line.
In the Nina area, does this work now?
Yeah.
Hello?
Okay.
And then, just recently, we're gonna have a net zero school here, which is really, you know, that's right up my alley. I'm all about the environment, and so, a little bit about me and my background. I get to claim Nina and Manassia as my home, because I was born in Theodore Clark. First three years of my life, I was on the Manassia side of the boulevard, so there you go. I really come from Manassia. Spent the rest of my life in Nina, though, in foster care. So, I'm the youngest of 13, Catholic family. Dad could hold a beer better, and he could hold a job, so. Through foster care, though, I learned a lot, a lot of good things. I learned right from wrong. I learned how to be a good steward to the roles that I played throughout life. Within Kimberly-Clark, I started working on the floor as a union worker. Did a lot of grunt work, smelly work, dirty work. Tissue machines are very dirty, folks, especially when you're running soft teak. I don't know if you guys remember that, the old Kleenex, different colors, so. Worked my way up through the research. Got into research in the late '90s, and from there, got a few patents from Kimberly-Clark for a conductive tissue, believe it or not, so. Married my high school sweetheart back in 1980, and I, you know, it's been 43 years now. I think she's starting to like me, so that's going well. Got three sons and two granddaughters, so public education is very important to me. You know, when I get to, I'm running against the former mayor of Nina, so name recognition is really key for me to win this race and represent us at the State House, so. That said, I just wanted to kinda come here, put some faces to some names. Sorry about, and I've called Stan too many times, and he let me know. But for the rest of you, like I said, just wanted to put names to faces. I wanted to let you know what I'm doing, that I'm here. Also met with folks in the Winnebago County at the board meeting there. Got up and gave a little spiel, so. Trying to understand local government a little bit better as I try, and I'll try to make my way to the State House and represent us in the 53rd. So, if you ever have any questions for me, I'm around, so. But thanks for that, okay?
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak this evening? Hold on one second, please. Alderman Sevenik? Testing, yep.
Can you see if that one's working?
Hello?
Can you just turn it off?
It's just the middle button?
Yeah.
I think it's off, it's red.
Oh, that's on.
No.
Now it's green?
Yeah, it's okay. I can go take a look at it after she's done speaking.
Can you hear me if I talk into this one?
Yep.
Hi, my name is Bethany Gangler. I live at 210 Water Street. Today, I'm here to speak on the recycling fee proposal. I'd like to ask you to reconsider, or at least put a pause on this resolution. This year has been exceptionally difficult on our residents. Our utility bills have increased, and our assessments of our homes have skyrocketed. My own home is now assessed at 650% more than when I purchased it back in 2016. I know at first glance, charging residents $75 per year to increase recycling pickup seems like a small price to pay for this service, but I can tell you from personal experience how quickly this fee adds up. I was personally, wrongfully assessed, a total of $700 by the City of Manassia, because someone back in 1994 requested a larger refuse container at my address. What is $75 now will be $750 in 10 years, an amount of money that instead of going into local businesses or being invested into our homes to improve them, will be going to increase a service that's already working just fine as it is. Finally, I would like to ask you to consider that if you do impose this recycling fee, that along with it, you reconsider the notification process for special assessments for refuse bins. And notify addresses every, maybe every five years, or every 10 years, or even every 20 years? While I take responsibility for being a first-time homeowner and being unaware of this fee, I think it's only fair that the city takes responsibility to notify people that they may be inheriting a 30-year-old fee. Again, I ask you to really look at this recycling fee and consider whether it will improve residents' lives, or if it will hinder our residents. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak this evening?
Thank you. My name is Bill Polno. I live at 534 South Lake Street in Nina. Appreciate all the work you do as an alderman there, so I know of the thankless hours you put in. I'm also, I also own rental property here in Manassia, and I'm here to speak on the rent, or the recycling fee. As, you know, it seems like you're changing gears to go to, and I understand that we have that recycling fee in Nina as well, and that seems like to be the transition, and that makes sense to me, but I was also kinda perplexed on the cost structure that you put through in the memo, because I started doing some comparables. Nina's recycling fee is $42, and Oshkosh is $35, Appleton is zero, Green Bay's is basically, you can buy the cart for $105.50. It's a one-time charge. So, you know, I look at the cost structure, I'm a little familiar with some of these memos, because I know you guys get tons of them, such as I do, and, you know, I look at the, after consideration of revenue sources, I would think that's the metals and some of the other things you get. But I also look at the equipment usage you add in there for to determine your fee structure, and that seems kinda perplexing to me. I don't know if that's like a depreciation of the mechanical devices, like the trucks, but I think that should be better defined, because if you're gonna start off at $75 to basically go to one extra pickup a month, or, as I understand, or every two weeks, this is a value to the citizenry. I don't think it warrants the $75 fee. That seems a little bit out of line with pretty much anybody in the valley. So, I hope you do a little more due diligence on the math and define that when you're talking to people about the equipment usage. It seems, I've never seen that term in a memo or something offered, is when you're going to a new fee, I think it should be more defined, so the citizenry has a better understanding. And hopefully, you can lower that fee. I think it's good to do that structure that you're intending to do, to keep it more delineated, but $75 is much higher than anybody else in the valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak this evening?
Chad Lewis, 1032 Grove Street. I guess I just wanna make a counterpoint to the past couple discussions on the recycling fee. If you calculate it out, $75 a month comes out to approximately six, I'm sorry, $75 a year comes out to approximately six and a quarter a month. I know one thing, an issue that we've had is recyclables pile up. We have a great recycling program here in the tri-county area, and we do recycle, but there can be, between Amazon shipments and other kinds of things, there can be a lot of materials that end up getting, having to get stuck somewhere or stored and that kind of thing, and some kind of regular, like every week recycling schedule is something that I think would be very beneficial for the residents of Manassia. And six and a quarter a month, I mean, I can't go to grocery store and buy milk for much less than that, so it really seems like a, kind of a no-brainer from my standpoint, so I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I really wasn't planning on coming today, but then my wife sent this to me.
Can you speak in the smaller microphone, please?
I wasn't really planning on coming today, but then my wife forwarded me this email about recycling. Now, I've been a Manassia resident for close to about 20 years now. What I've noticed is that, oh, okay, last name is Times, T as in Tom, I-N-E-S, 1840 Northridge Court.
Thank you.
And what I've noticed is that, in Manassia specifically, my fees have gone up, my quality of service has gone down. So, now you're asking me to pay $75 to add an extra week, but I honestly don't believe we need one, because you're gonna close the facility now where I can go dump, when I do get all those extra boxes, I'm supposed to keep them in my garage in my house. Then also, the $75 fee seemed like it was open-ended, and the fact that the Public Works' director, he's gonna review it annually to see if there needs to be any changes, so now you have an open-ended structure. So, what that tells me is that I agree to $75, I have no more to agree to, because anytime the Public Works wants to increase that fee, they can. They don't have to come back to the council, they don't have to come to me, it's just another bill that I get that's accelerated. What I've noticed also is, I'm on the Manassia Utilities Commission, and what I notice when I'm in the commission meetings sometimes, I'm not sure if that's here, because this is my first time attending this meeting, is that we tend to be laxadaisical and show no empathy when spending other people's money. And I, for one, would just like to voice my opinion and my concerns for trying to rein in some things. I understand, you know, bi-weekly, if I look at my schedule, there's two or three times in a year where I'm bi-monthly, so I get two pickups probably three times a year. Other than that, it's once a month roughly, and I'm fine with that, because that's controllable. I know when it's, I used to go out there, I know if I get abundant, I could take it over to the city itself, but now you wanna charge me $75 and put me on a bi-weekly schedule and then close off a dump facility that I have access to. It's similar to when now, I should've read on that one, but when you switched us to Buckland from being able to just dump at the city in the municipal garage, that became, you know, you tend to develop habits. So, my habit was always go to the city garage, and I had to develop a new habit to go to Buckland. That was fine. I didn't, I didn't, I don't see anything wrong with that, because Buckland's is fine. But this right here, I don't agree with. I did a little, I didn't do as much research as I would've liked to, but I did read enough of the details that was telling me that it wouldn't be to my benefit. And I bet if you were to, not put this on the ballot, because nobody would show up to vote it off-cycle, but if you were to go around door-to-door and say, "Who would approve the paying of $75 a year for a service that's gonna be bi-weekly with an open-end checkbook at the back of it?", I'm not sure how many people would say yes to that. That's my piece.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak this evening? All right, I'm just gonna go grab that mic and drop it back off, and then we'll go on to the next part of the agenda.
Mayor, just ask someone else.
Oh, they have another mic. We'll do it later, okay. It's not a Q and A right now, so happy to answer the question after the meeting.
Can I make one more statement there?
You have a couple, yeah, briefly, go ahead.
Actually, no, we can.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it. All right, next, seeing that there is no one else that wishes to speak this evening, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for us to approve the Common Council minutes of 8:5 of 24.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we move on to item two, which is from the Special Board of Public Works. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you. We had a Special Board of Public Works' meeting on the 5th, and we approved the street use application for autogrunk ski, Saturday, September 28th. This would be from 6:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m., and this is part of the Manassia Parks and Rec Department.
Motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight-zero.
Thank you. Item three is another item from the Special Board of Public Works. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you. Also, at that meeting, we approved a street use application for the autogrunk ski bike ski, which is on Sunday, the following day, September 29th, which is from 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This time, it is sponsored both by the Manassia Park and Rec and the Manassia Sesquicentennial Committee.
Motion was made by Alderman Sevenik, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight-zero.
Thank you. Next is item four from the Administration Committee, and this is a development agreement. Is there a motion? Alderman Eisenach? Alderman Nichols?
I didn't, I was yielding to Alderman Eisenach.
Alderman Eisenach?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to, the Administration Committee would like to recommend approval of the development agreement buy-in between the City of Manassia and Nicolay Manassia LLC related to the development of the former Nicolay School property and the former Southern Banta parking lot property, being parcels 3-00475-00, 3-00482-00, and 3-00455-00.
Motion was made by Alderman Eisenach, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Is there any discussion? Director Schrader, is there anything you wanna add to this item? Nope? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight-zero.
Thank you. Next is item five, which is from the Administration Committee. Is there a motion? Alderman Eisenach?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve the contract for assessment services with Associated Appraisal Consultants, Inc., for the term September 1, 24 through August 31, 2027.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Eisenach, seconded by Alderman Marshall. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight-zero.
Thank you. Next is item six, which is from the Special Personnel Committee meeting. Is there a motion? Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion that we accept the resignation of the Director of Public Works and go forward with the hurry process set forward on the Special Personnel Committee agenda that we set at 8:12:24.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Grady, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight-zero.
Thank you. Next, we move on to I, which is action items, and the first one is accounts payable. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Move to approve the accounts payable and payable for the term of August 2nd through August 15, 2024, in the amount of $4,977,235.31.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Nichols and seconded by Alderman Eisenach. Is there any discussion? Alderman Repella?
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mayor. This is check number 82429. This is by Best Fence. This is our August payment of $500. I know we brought this up middle of July, and I know that I've mentioned this to Sam a couple times. He was very thankful that I mentioned it to him. I'd like to just, we're paying $500 for a fence that's laying on the ground, and we've got photos by a couple Aldermen, and I just don't think that the fence is doing its due justice. We've been paying for that fence, and it's been down at least the last month or two months. I did not go there May and June. And I just want to withhold the payment there for $500. I don't see any use to this fence. I know Sam is trying to deal with this, but just looking for some action. So I don't want this check to be sent out, and we come to some, figure it out. The fence is doing nothing unless the city attorney's got some reasons why we have to have a fence that's laying down on the ground for $500. It's $6,000 per year. Over three years so far, we've spent $18,000 for a fence that's easily to walk between, easily to climb over, and now it's laying on the ground. And I don't foresee the whiting property being purchased in the next two or three years, and that's another $18,000. By fire, by now, we've paid for the fence already. So, thank you.
Thank you. Director Schrader or Attorney Struve, either, you want to comment on that since you were mentioned? Okay. Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you. As you know, I've brought this issue up long before that, and I'm also brought up the issue that we cut these checks, they already got the payment in their hand, we're just rubber stamping here tonight. And that's why I bring this issue up, in case we ever come across something like this that we're not happy about. Alderman Repella, if you want to, you'll have to ask to remove that check separately to take a vote on that. So if you want to make that motion later, after I'm finished, here's the thing that really bothers me about it, is that I did have a meeting with the city attorney, and along with Alderman Repella, on this issue. I brought my pictures in.
July 23rd.
According to Alderman Repella, it was July 23rd. And not only that, but the site is absolutely horrid. If we had a resident like this in our neighborhood, that would have to be cleaned up. I was told, no one's complained. So what I said is, I'm complaining. That was a week ago. I don't know if a letter was sent out or not to the alleged owner, and that's my other point. It's someone else's property, it's not ours. Why are we paying $500 a month? And I wish I had the ability to show the audience here, these pictures, of a fence that we're paying for that's laying on the ground, with weeds taller than my self. And then the building, which was the office there, has got trees growing around it, you can't even hardly see the building anymore. And it's weeds, and I thought, okay, I'll take the proper channels. I spoke to the Public Works Director, I talked to the city attorney, and of course, to be fair to Sam, Sam was on vacation and then also had an injury. But Sam did indicate, pardon?
Not on vacation.
Oh, I'm sorry. He was...
He was after surgery.
Okay, so he wasn't available. And I also had conversations with Sam. And Sam, a month ago, told me that he would like to possibly contact this fence company and see if, seeing we spent $18,000 already, if maybe we could just call it a wash and let us keep the fence and maybe maintain it ourselves. Well, that's the other question. Who's supposed to be maintaining that? I still didn't get an answer from anyone here at City Hall. Their Saturday, I drove out their special. I know some other Aldermen did too, because I did receive a text with the same kind of pictures I had. You know, it's disturbing. I mean, I'm pretty upset about it. There's residents that actually live out there. Just because you can't see it in your neighborhood doesn't mean it doesn't exist. And if we ever want to market that property, that property can't look like that. We've done that with other properties. We made them appear nice, they sold. We kept up the maintenance on them, they sold. We're not doing that here. Now, again, I'll go back to my point, we don't even own it, but somehow, we have some My solution is get rid of the fence, post signs, and put on those signs, if you are trespassing on this property, you will be arrested and you will be prosecuted. Plain and simple.
I'd just like to reiterate the point that Director Schrader was, oh, because he had a surgery. Director Schrader, would you like to comment?
I would. So again, as we stated, this has been a long, ongoing issue. I take full responsibility, because I was the one that took this project over, correct? We had a very unfortunate incident. We had a fire that was still on fire with kids Snapchatting in the back of that building while the fire department was putting that out. There was a major, major life safety issue here. We took that, on that, because we knew the property owner wouldn't. These bills are getting sent to the property owner, and they will be basically an in-and-out. And I understand that there is a major, major debt on this property. I have not looked at it in a while, it's probably over $1.3 million. And again, $500 is $500. It's not, it's not an excuse. But it did get to a point where we started to want to look into this. You said your meeting was July 23rd, and I want to go on record, that I was out on personal leave for a surgery on July 22nd. The day I get back, this is not the most pressing item for a community development director to take on, where we're getting no complaints except two Aldermen that are going back there. And that's, that's our point to make, not to say that we're not going to look into it, or to try to work this out, but to continue to bring this up on a public floor and say that staff's not doing their job, is not, is not that. So we're trying to make sure we work through this. It is on the top of our list. We did have some further conversations with the city attorney regarding liability. And there's two things there, with one, cutting the weeds and the grass, and the fence. So again, we are going to continue to look into this, and I think we have made some progress since you guys did last bring this up and met with the city attorney, and we hope to continue to move that forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll ask a couple questions to our community director, Sam Schroeder. What is the next steps on this, then? So I understand $500 is blah, 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 but you were off on leave and stuff, and is there something you're going to do in the interim that can resolve this? Maybe this check passes for this 500, but it doesn't happen again. But I just want to know what, and I understand, it's not a top priority of anything, but it is something that has to be addressed, and you have to communicate back to us council people as to what the next steps are.
Correct. And the reason that Stan knows, because he stated the next steps, is because we've communicated that to Stan and Randy, that the next steps, we want to have those conversations with the current fence owner about how much we have paid into that fence, and talk about a future there. If that isn't an option, or there is pullback, then the other option we want to look at from a city attorney standpoint is the liability to take the fence down and put signage up exactly as we had talked about. So that is the next steps. We just, and again, I was not on vacation. It is not a personal fun leave to have a surgery, and that's why I want to be very, very strict there, because again, that's, why are we attacking staff for being on, quote, unquote, vacation when they have FMA leave and hold-on leave?
Thank you. But I don't know if taking the fence away and doing anything probably help, but posting no trespassing signs, because if nobody's watching that area, are we going to have to have a police squad cargo pass there every couple hours and start picking people up? Because they probably won't even do that either. So we just got to put this to bed somehow and figure out a way to get this accomplished.
Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you. Sam, the issue isn't about your vacation or whatever. I did talk to you prior to you going in and having your surgery and that. And then, as you said, staff was going to handle it, so we, so Randy and I did have a meeting. And by the way, this isn't about two Aldermen, because I've had conversations, I know with at least one other Alderman, that had indicated that they're not happy about this, and sent me the pictures, what they saw, and I'm like, those are the same pictures I have. And so, when was the meeting with the city attorney?
July 23rd.
Okay. And what is today?
Meeting on July 15th, and our council meeting, and we met with her July 23rd.
And still, you go back there, I went back there over the weekend, and nothing, and it's the same. At least pick the fence up and put it up to make it secure in that area. It's ridiculous. I mean, how embarrassing. If I did that in my former business, no one would do business with me. There's a fence that we're paying $500 a month for, laying on the ground.
And I'm telling you, I'm taking responsibility for that, because I have not...
Good, because that's why I'm here today, so that staff will start taking responsibility.
Gentlemen, please, let's keep the decorum.
Just because I'm loud doesn't mean it isn't decorum.
I'm just asking for respectful dialogue. Attorney Struve, did you want to say something? Okay, sorry, I thought you were pouring your mic. Is there any further discussion? Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just want to make a motion to vote on check number 82429, if we pay that or not. So we need to have a vote whether we pay that check.
Is there a motion to amend?
Yeah.
Alderman Sevigny? Alderman Repella, are you okay if I switch it over to him?
I'm done, yep.
Okay, sorry. Alderman Sevigny?
As I pointed out, the check's been cut, and it's been sent, so it really doesn't pay. But my point is this, either improve the situation, or the next check is not going to get paid by this body.
Is there any other further discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven one.
Next is item two of action items. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Seeing that all requirements have been met, I move to approve the application for a temporary Class B retailer's license for Fox Jazz Fest, August 31st, 2024, from 10:00 to 7:00, and September 1st, 2024, from 10:00 to 7:00, at Jefferson Park, by the Jazz Corner Society, Incorporated.
Motion was made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item three. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Seeing that all requirements have been met, I move to approve the application for the temporary Class B retailer's license at the Grunski Runski, September 28th, 2024, from 8:30 AM to 11:30 AM at Curtis Reed Square, for the Manassia Wrestling Club.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item four of action items. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Seeing that all requirements have been met, I move to approve the Class A beer and Class A liquor license application for Dolgin Corporation LLC, doing business as Dollar General Store, number 13175, John Green as the agent at 1135 Appleton Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Next is item five of action items. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Seeing that all requirements have been met, I move to approve the Class A beer and Class A liquor license application for the Caribbean Market LLC, doing business as the Wan &amp; Beat Caribbean Market, Gina Levage as the agent at 714 Appleton Road, Suite C.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item six of action items. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Seeing as all requirements have been met, move to approve the Class B beer license application for Mucky Duck LLC, doing business as Mim's Charcoal Grill, Amber Hamilton as the agent, at 342 Shoot Street.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Next is item seven of action items. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Seeing as all requirements have been met, move to approve the change of agent for Pingley Wigley Midwest LLC, doing business as Pingley Wigley, number 38, at 1151 Midway Road. Manassia as Sarah, and Sarah Hopkins is the successor agent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Marshall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item eight of action items. Is there a motion? Alderman Eisenach?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to approve the professional services agreement with Jewel Associates Engineers, Inc., to complete a second appraisal ATC request for electric transmission line easement, 971K11, for the amount of $4,100.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Alderman Eisenach, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you. I think my discussion might be with Cory. Who would be handling this? There's some type of agent that they want to spray. Can you touch on that a little bit?
Attorney Struve?
The attorney? Yeah, okay, sorry.
Thank you. Yes, there is a pamphlet that does spell out kind of the request to use herbicides. What's before us today is just the professional services agreement to allow for the city to obtain a second appraisal. This would ultimately be reimbursed, as indicated in the memo, by the ATC company. We'd like to undergo this second appraisal to allow for an opportunity for staff, as well as Hackrott Wetland Reserve, to be a part of that second appraisal and meet with the appraisers. But in terms of the specific herbicide, the nature of those chemicals, in discussion with staff internally at least, it was our position that that's likely not an option that we would recommend to the city moving forward. But I can't tell you specifically what herbicides, you know, that they would like to use, and we would recommend consent to use those.
I mean, I'm not trying to be an environmentalist or anything, but I do have concerns about this, and I, you know, these are areas where the water flows into the storm area... this. And I, you know, these are areas where the water flows into the storm areas and into the ditches and out to the wildlife areas. And after reading that, you know, when you get a gut feeling, you want to address it and talk about it. So hopefully, you and staff will take that issue more serious, especially if you're talking about the Hackrod Wetland Preserve. I'm very concerned about putting out certain chemicals into our environment, and that's the whole point of having that preserve, so.
I appreciate that. Excuse me. I appreciate that concern, and there is an option in the offer too, to not consent to that, and then they would not use those herbicides. So that's likely where staff's recommendation would be going prior to any education, of course, on those.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for bringing up that point, Alderman Sevigny. Wholeheartedly agree. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Next is nine, last of Action Items. Is there a motion? Alderman Grotty?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion that we approve and accept and spend the awarded $300,000 grant funds from the Fox Cities Convention and Visitors Bureau Tourism Development Grant for the Jefferson Park Boat Launch and Trail System Redevelopment Project.
Motion was made by Alderman Grotty, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to appointments, and we have one appointment. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for us to approve the appointment of Associate Appraisal Consultants, Incorporated, as the City of Manasha's assessor effective September 1 of this year through August 31st of 2027.
Motion was made by Alderman Sevigny, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Next item is N, Public Comment on Any Matter Listed on This Agenda. If you so wish to partake, please share your name and then stick to the five minutes. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? It's got to be on something on the common council agenda, not any of the other boards. It's not on this one. Yep, it'll be a different meeting. Any discussion on anything on this common council agenda? Yeah, if it's on this agenda. If you have a question, I'm happy to come over by you in a second and answer it if that works. Seeing none, then, is there anything for O, Items for the Next Meeting Agenda? Alderman Repella?
Getting fenced.
Okay.
No way.
Really?
So then, is there a second for that? Okay, motion was made by Alderman Repella, seconded by Alderman Sevigny, and it would be needed to be by a majority vote. All right, if we could have a roll call, please. Do you need a second? All right, just a moment, please.
Motion carries seven one.
All right, is there anything else for item O? Seeing none, we'd move on to P, which should be adjournments, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion was made by Alderman Eisenach, seconded by Alderman Perkins. All those in favor? We adjourned at 6:54. Thank you, everybody.
The City of Manasha is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manasha residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website, www-manashawi.gov. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manasha issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office, 920-967-3608. Contacting their city Aldermen, contact information appears on the city website, or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.